Call the meeting to order. Would everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Georgie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gorola?
Here.
Mayor Protem Viasenior?
Here.
Mayor Austin?
Here.
Councilmember Brogie?
Here.
Councilmember Mendez?
Here.
Moving to number four, approval of the agenda. Can I have approval, motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're moving on to public comments. We won't have any public, open public comments this, tonight because of this. Pursuant to Government Code, Section 549543.8, public comments at this meeting shall be limited to addressing only the subject manner of the public hearing being held today, Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. With that, we're going to move on to item number six, new business. Item number six A, fourth public hearing to receive input regarding adoption of a district-based election system.
Thank you. Go ahead and have Kristen come up and take us through the fourth meeting. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Last time I saw you, you just had a couple maps. Now we have eight total maps to look at. I'm just gonna present an overview of the new maps and then we can refer back to the other ones as necessary. So, here we are in this process. We are at the fourth public hearing on the transition to district-based elections. And in order to meet the timeline, the safe harbor timeline that you have, you do need to have a map adopted at the December 12th regular council meeting. What that means is that hopefully this evening you will be able to select a final map that can then be adopted on December 12th. So, small changes are possible, but there's really no time to draw whole new maps or consider anything that's not already on the table. And of course, next year, 2024, is when by-district elections will begin to roll out and that process will complete in 2026. So, a quick review of legal requirements. Federal law gives us the equal population rule and we are looking for a total deviation of less than 10%. We do have one map that is exceeding that, but we'll talk about that in just a moment. Of course, Federal Voting Rights Act and avoiding racial gerrymandering, which would be considered drawing any districts where race or ethnicity is the sole factor going into those boundary lines or the predominating factor. From the state of California, and if we ever reference the Fair Maps Act, that is the California law that establishes these rank-ordered criteria. First, districts should be contiguous. Second, we should minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. Third, our district boundaries should be easily identifiable or recognizable to the residents of the city. And fourth, last on the list, districts, to the extent possible, should be geographically compact. And that's defined as not avoiding including a nearby area of population to include a farther away area of population. We also have a couple maps that have compactness issues as well, so I will show you those as we get to them. So, I really briefly had a slide on election sequencing at the last hearing, but I didn't get into it. And I wanted to even get really specific about it here, because not only does council select a map with district boundaries, they also have to select a sequence of elections for that map. What that means is assigning each of the five districts to hold 2024 elections or 2026 elections. Now, when you have one current council member living in a district, the common practice is to just assign that district to that council member's election cycle, right? So that's the case for some of the districts. But all of these maps, because we do have two council members in the same census block, so they live in the same block, so they're always going to be in the same district, no matter how we draw the lines, it is that district that has two council members that creates a challenge, because the two council members, Councilmember Gorola and Councilmember Brogie, have different election years. So, I'm trying to explain this, because it gets really confusing. But if that district is assigned to 2024, then we have the options on the left side here. And if that district is assigned to 2026, we have the options on the right side. And it's worth reminding members of the public that everyone currently on council has been elected at-large and will complete their at-large term. So there's nothing here that's shortening anyone's term length. There's nothing lengthening anyone's term length. However, there is an option for, in the case of Councilmember Brogie, there is an option where if the district in which she resides in is assigned to 2024, she can actually choose to run in 2024, even though she won't have completed her at-large term, that's until 2026. She has the option to run for the by-district seat, which is would be 2024 to 2028, and then would, if elected, resign from the at-large seat. So that's the only situation, but it's not imposed. It's a choice, right? The other choice is if that district is assigned to 2024, then Councilmember Brogie's still entitled to complete that at-large term in 2026. But that district wouldn't hold another election until 2028. So what that, what that means is, is in 2028, if Councilmember Brogie were to run for that by-district seat, unlike in the past where you'd have incumbent next to that person's name, you wouldn't be able to have that, because you had two years out of office. So, really, it's, it's that sort of, if we're looking at this as a matrix of, you know, four things, it's that bottom-left corner where there's that or. That's where we get into a complicated choice for Councilmember Brogie. That's why in, I believe most of the maps, I have put election sequence option A as assigning it to a 2026 election, just because that's a little bit easier. But again, that then presents Councilmember Gorola with the exact same situation of having a term that ends in 2024. But then if the district is 2026, there are two years to wait before there's another opportunity to run for the by-district seat. And again, you can run, but you can't have it be running as an incumbent. So, all of this is very complicated. I do want to make sure the council understands what those options are and understands that no matter what you choose, it's not ideal. So, I'm not recommending one over the other. I just want you to be fully informed of what the scenarios are with that district. And every map that we look at will have this district that creates this choice. So, no matter which map you go with, you are ultimately going to have to make this choice. So, that's the sort of, you know, caveat to all of this, is keep this in mind. And if you have any questions about it, I can hopefully answer them. But I'm hoping that just by getting really specific and actually using names as opposed to saying, "The council member whose term expires in 2024 versus the council member whose term expires in 20..." You know, it gets a little crazy. So, election sequencing poses a challenge here in Fillmore. You now have before you eight maps. There were three maps that NDC originally drew. And at the last meeting, we did get detailed feedback from Councilmember Viasenior of suggestions for how to modify the green map to do a better job of unifying North Fillmore into one district. Now, as I'm sure Councilmember Viasenior has already realized, there was no easy way to take all of her suggestions and make it work with a legally compliant map. So that's why we have three new maps. Two that tried to take that feedback into account and ended up with what I've called the Scotty Dog District, which is a little strange district that looks like a Scotty Dog, that poses compactness challenges. And then the Coral Map, which is just a totally different approach. And then we have two maps that were submitted by the public that we'll look closely at, 101 and 102. So, that's the overview. Again, if anyone wants to zoom in and out on the maps, they are available online. And the reason that I'm showing you this slide here is because it's, it's actually displaying the green map, just so we have that as a little bit of a reference point. That is the one that we tried to work with and make changes to. So first, we realize, okay, you couldn't really make District One that includes all of North Fillmore, because the population is too large. Hmm? Yeah, yeah. Oh, do you want to look at green? Yeah, this is green right here. It's just on the online viewer. Right? So, this was the starting point, where we have, you know, this almost, you know, hat on top of Fillmore, which is District One. And the big concern with the green map here was that that hat didn't extend far enough south on the west side to include what's really a coherent neighborhood of North Fillmore. And so, in order to try to unify that neighborhood, there's a domino effect on all of the other districts. So, trying to keep some sort of District One hat on the top of Fillmore, the purple map tries to unify that neighborhood into District Five, okay? Again, if we do move some of the boundaries there from District Two, from Pole Creek over to Mountain View, which was another suggestion, we do run into a little compactness problem, because what's really the front legs or paws of the Scotty Dog here, this is the area directly south of Heritage Valley, that's one long census block that actually goes all the way from the edge of the blue there, all the way over to Pole Creek. So it's one block that can't be divided. So it creates something that looks rather strange. However, this is population balanced. So this was one approach. The other approach is the teal map, which is rather than having District One that's a hat over all of the northern part of Fillmore, that we, that we draw a north-south line along A Street, again, trying to unify that neighborhood that's west of, or the, the parts of the neighborhood west of A Street, all the way down to basically the train tracks. And with that, you still have to adjust all the other districts. District Three here is the exact same Scotty Dog with the exact same issue of compactness. But you can see it's really a different approach to take for the northern part of the city. So, to the extent that these are just like showing you, hey, this was our best effort here, there's some trade-offs that have to be made anytime we adjust maps. And then my team also came up with a different option, which I think doesn't do a very good job of unifying that neighborhood into a district. It's not really, it's, again, that line along Blaine Avenue, I think, is sort of cutting in the, in the middle of the neighborhood. But it does give you a District One hat, as well as some compact shapes, right? So there's no weird, you know, legs sticking out or anything like that. So, the shapes look nice. The caveat with this map would be, does it actually do anything to improve the neighborhood within one district? Then, I'm not sure exactly who submitted this map, but map 101 came from a member of the public. And I think it's, it's really interesting to look at, because it has a very, very different approach and a very low deviation, 4.16. But it's really trying to unify all of the southern part of Fillmore, south of 126, as much as possible. Again, you can see that District Two does go south of 126 there a little bit, because it's the same issue. If you put all of that, try to put all of that green District Three together, everything south of 126, it would be too high in population. So the deviation would be too high. So that's why there's a little bit of carve-out there, I think. But the other consideration with map 101 is that not only do we have a District Three that has two current council members, this District Three actually has three current council members. So, that would then mean that two of the other districts are vacant and would say, would take that slide with all of the election sequencing and then just, you know, throw sort of another wrench in it by having a third council member there. So that's, that's because you currently have three council members that live south of 126, right? So some of these things that you, that might at first glance seem kind of like logical for drawing districts, it's never just, it's never easy, right? And then, so lastly, we have map 102, which was drawn by Councilmember Gorola, I think, quickly before leaving for Thanksgiving. So, it wasn't a perfectly balanced map. It's at 13.34% total deviation. But you can see it's sort of similar to the teal map, but it's almost better, because it doesn't have a Scotty Dog district, right? It, it really, it follows A Street and it takes that sort of a similar approach to unifying North Fillmore in District One. And then having a little bit more of a central district with District Three, and then pulling District Four a little bit north of 126 to pull in some additional population. So, I took a look closer at this map to see if it was possible to balance this. And I saw that actually this map can be balanced, population balanced, by just moving two blocks. And so, just so that everyone knows what that looks like, I couldn't present it to you, because we can only have you consider maps that have been posted for seven days, but I can tell you. So, what we're looking at here is if you look at, in order to balance this map, if you are looking at District Five, which is sort of this orangey-beige color, and you're looking at the block south of 126, between B Street and C Street, that is, let me reference, it's 100, it's a, it's a rather large population. It's 179 residents. So if you take that block and you add it to District Four, the purple, that starts you getting this map balanced. But then you have to take some of the population from District Three, the green district, and give it to District Two, the blue district. So if we take just that one little rectangle, south of First Street, between Fillmore and Central, that's 104 residents. And if you put that into District Two, then you get this map balanced at around 7-point-something percent total deviation. So, that, that is, I think, important information for you to have. And I think if you had a little more time before the holiday, you probably could have balanced this map. So I think, thinking of sort of map 102 and the teal map as being similar, but that this one is definitely something you can consider if you were to make those changes I just described. So...
Would I have a moment to make a comment about that?
Absolutely, because that's where we are right now.
Sure.
We are at the time for you to ask questions and hopefully I can clarify.
Yeah.
Can we go back to it on the screen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
My intent with building this map was to come up with a, an approximate map that would minimize future changes, especially because we don't have the chart pulled up. But I believe the way I built it was one and four were population, or low in population, where future development is already happening or soon to happen. And I think that's one thing that we ought to consider. And the biggest struggle with getting it just right to that 10% is those census blocks, especially the one that you talked about, that goes from Heritage Valley with, you know, 100 units that aren't accounted for, just south of Bonds, all the way around to Pole Creek, kind of encircling an entire neighborhood. About, you know, this is probably for future discussion, but something that I'd like to at least leave this meeting with is whether or not it's even possible to influence the shape of future census blocks. Because I don't know who created those. I don't think it was anybody in this room. If anybody in this room had influence on it, I'd love to hear about it. But not to belittle the Census Bureau, but that somebody else who has no knowledge of really what Fillmore is, created those blocks. And at some point, those were probably just, okay, there's nobody here, let's just make it easy and create one block that covers this whole area, so that we don't have to divide those up into blocks that have no people in them. Whereas, if that's compared against maybe the general plan or even specific plans that in the future, it would be better suited, especially with the 2030 census in mind. So I'd hope that maybe we can influence or maybe even contact the Bureau about how those are created, so that we can not put ourselves in a almost impossible situation, because our population is so low. Now, I do appreciate you taking a look at those. This, like you said, was, the intent was to create something a little more central, that also touched 126. But then, again, hopefully minimizing future changes. And you can see that the changes that you mentioned are small changes that would hopefully bring it in there and then might even be able to be undone when all the population is accounted for properly.
Yes. So, two things. You mentioned that District One and District Four are areas where you expect there to be, in the 2030 census, larger population growth relative to 2020. So, you're correct. So, we wouldn't need to change District One at all. It still has a, it's still slightly underpopulated. And then District Four would also remain slightly underpopulated, just not quite as much, because it's, it would be taking in from District Five for balance. And then with regard to the census blocks, yes, we will get you the information about how to try to petition the Census Bureau to revisit certain district, or certain census blocks, because they do revisit that prior to the 2030 census, though we haven't seen a lot of success in the state of California in, at the state level, trying to facilitate that communication. Any other questions or clarifying?
I have one that I probably should have asked day one. When, when a district, let's say we're drawing the district line down Central, and there's a district on one side and there's a district on the other side, does that mean Central is split exactly in half? And this side of the road goes this way and this side of the road goes this way? And the same with cross streets. I mean, if Fourth Street, let's say, is drawn down, like it is on some of them, does that mean the northern side of the district would be in my district and the other, the other district would get the other southern side? I'm just wondering, are those, are those actually boundaries?
Yes, usually they are. If you zoom in really closely, sometimes you'll see that there are census blocks that are actually just parts of the road or parts of a median, right? There are no population. But in, for all practical purposes, the actual boundary line, when you see a line on the road, it's the center of the road.
Okay.
So everything on one side is in one district, on the other side in another district.
Okay.
And that's actually a very common question that people ask.
I should have asked it day one, but I just thought of it. Anybody else have any questions? Carrie? No? Okay. With that, I guess we'll open the public hearing. Several speakers have given their time to other speakers, which I had to sit through and sift it through. Our first speaker is Brandy Hollis. We have a three-minute time limit. When you get 30 seconds, the usual light will come on.
Good evening. Hi, councilmembers. I was really, just really concerned after the last meeting and kind of sitting here, looking at the newspaper and stuff like that and looking over the green map. And my main concern is, I live in this teal section, number two on the green map. And this is old Fillmore, a lot of industrial area where like Amiches and garages and stuff is. And then you go over and sideways and off, and then the new neighborhood's like, it's not even cohesive. It doesn't make sense. And this green map just splits up my neighborhood. And looking at all the maps, I was just stressed out. And then I just saw 102. And I was like, oh, this map makes sense. So, I really hope that you would consider the 102 map. To me, it makes sense as far as kind of neighborhoods go, fluidity through town. Even with the proposed amendments, it makes so much more sense. But I just would really hate to see the green map go forward, not because I want to break up North Fillmore. up North Fillmore or anything like that. I just, the green map, it just, you have, you break up my neighborhood and there's people of the same, they've been there forever, the houses are all the same age, they're old farmhouses, um, old, uh, original established properties, um, you know, mixed with brand new incoming families with the, you know, people that have been established here. My, my house was born or built in like 1940s something versus, and then including the bridges. It's just, my neighborhood doesn't need to be broken up either. It's, all the people in there are, are very similar, you know, um, long time residents, been there forever. Um, I just, I would really hate to see my neighborhood just split in half like that. Chris thinks if you created 102, that makes so much sense to me even with the amendments. So I really hope you guys consider something like that, which really makes sense in neighborhood wise and the fluidity of neighborhoods in the city. I think that's amazing. So I just would like you guys, um, to kind of consider that and consider that this is a creek industrial area to jump over here with new houses. It just, and then my neighborhood right here, which is kind of more the same demographic and population you split in half. Or, I mean, I wouldn't want to split the same demographics in half, just like we wouldn't want to split North Fillmore in half. Just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, you guys.
We need it. Sherri Wright?
Um, I just wanted to point out that the mapping process you guys use in comparison, I only know the other one is the one that Fillmore Unified School District used, it's very non-user friendly. Took me some time, I had to call the city and ask for help and it's just not a, this is supposed to be inclusive of the public and it's not really that. And I feel like this, the exact population that it probably excludes the most is the one that I've heard citizens in the council reference, that this whole process is intended to benefit. Also initially in one of the meetings, the demographer stated that this process must be completed before January 1st, before the law changes to protect the incumbents. And suddenly that's just been dismissed and it doesn't appear that anything is here to protect all incumbents, just some of them. So that's a little, I feel like we were misled initially when that was stated. Up front, you could have said that we're not going to do that and that wasn't what was told to the public. On Map 101, the, it states that three of you are in the same district. It says that, but on the map, if you zoom in on the tool that they have on there, they're not in the same district according to the demographer's mapping tool. So I don't, I'm kind of confused on how that came about. And then also if, down the road, if the census blocks change, as I'm sure they will, does that open you guys up? Like I can come back and file a lawsuit because you're not in compliance with census blocks if that's what we have to maintain? I mean, is this just like ongoing to keep getting sued? There has to be some finality to it. And then also I noticed on the ordinance, it doesn't say anything about what happens when no one from that district chooses to run. Like if you have no one, uh, you know, nominated or wants to run from that district, what is your process going to be and does that have to be included in your ordinance? Or you pass an ordinance and then down the road, we find out how you're going to work that out? I mean, I know the person gets appointed, but to me that should be set up front to the public so we know what that process is, not later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Luanna Brock.
Good evening, council members. Um, I just wanted to make a plea yet once again. You've heard me, this is probably the third or fourth time. It, it saddens me that the idea of a workshop type format was not considered for the community to participate in this process. I know, um, one of the council members' last meeting mentioned that they were open to that and yet still we did not have that. I found it very, very helpful when we did it with the school district. The new maps that were provided tonight, the only way I was able to find them after making several phone calls was to be told that they were only posted on the agenda. And the map, the green, the yellow and the orange are on the city webpage. It says green, yellow, orange. These new maps are not on the city webpage, they are only attached to the agenda. And that's a little concerning when we are doing this as a public hearing. The last thing I want to say, and it, it is again a repeat, I feel that not protecting the incumbents, um, really put Councilmember Garola and Councilmember Brogie in a much less fair scenario. And so when I was studying these maps, I looked at Map Number 101 and I agree with Mrs. Wright that it looks like it's really Councilmember Villa Senor and Councilmember Garola that are listed in 101, not three members. So I would like that checked out. And of all those maps that are there, and I am very reluctant to say anything about any of them, but I would only suggest that you look at Map 101 or 102. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kathleen Briggs.
I'm here to talk about the public hearing, of course. And, uh, since I don't have much time to speak, I will speak in, uh, in concepts perhaps not considered. The orange map is the best, the green map is the worst because Saratoga Street is divided in the middle of the street. So is the neighborhood watch. Right in the middle of the historic prime house neighborhoods, Mountain View East is the natural line of demarcation. Don't mix side of street cliffs into two districts, separate upper and lower elevation Fillmore. Concepts are boundaries and areas divide by town growth progression. So the areas are homogeneous and common interests. Topography, that's a big issue in Fillmore. Cliff between upper and lower level Fillmore. West Fillmore rimmed by Sespe Creek. South Fillmore rimmed by Santa Clara River. East Fillmore rimmed by Pole Creek. And name the districts like west residential, like Sespe Creek to C Street include North Fillmore, C Street to East Mountain View. Well, I don't think that's right. But anyway, that's, that's in. And also, uh, the business district. Keep all businesses, public buildings and schools together, including, um, the Memorial Hall and the library. Foothill Drive include Hunter Drive, Wood Grove Track to Third Street. Historic House District, East Central to Mountain View West, that's that dividing of the street. And then north, Third Street North and Sespe Avenue South. Mountain View East Side and Eldorado and beyond and South 126. Issue, north is what's nor, uh, north of Highway 126 versus what's south of Highway 126? Plus North Fillmore surrounded by all kinds of boundaries already. And the candidates, you need another district? Get, and are you going to have trouble getting candidates to run in each designated area? And also, when it comes to the homogeneousness, do you want a five-year resident telling a native what to do? And I'm a native of Fillmore. Thank you. And I have a map.
Thank you.
So I'm submitting it now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Diane Sutton and Mary Bennetts giving her, her time. So I'll move this at six minutes.
The repetition regarding elections across the country for the past 10-plus years is to make voting easier and less complicated for those citizens feeling underrepresented. Why a basic system of winner takes all changed to a very complicated, computerized allocation of voters in districts outplay this system? The reviewing of maps and categorizing of citizens in rows and columns is a discouraging task and quickly puts me to sleep. How are these districts being selected? How will they be divided in the future? Who will be representative? Who will my representative be in countless other complexities? Not to mention the potential for gerrymandering, and I know, uh, the young lady said there wouldn't be, but it's very easy for gerrymandering where voters aren't choosing their representatives, representatives are choosing their voters. Why after three months has our legal staff not requested a legal analysis by the plaintiff? Joe Ramirez, an obvious politician, to disclose publicly why he feels he's been underrepresented by our at-large election? Is there something else going on? Along with other Fillmore voters, we'll be losing 80% of our representative options, going from five council member representatives to one. No offense to any sitting on the dais, but some I feel at different times more comfortable with one member than another depending on the issue. How is districting going to improve on decreasing our options as voters? In our last city council election where three seats became available, it was a challenging task to find candidates who would consider running. I know because I helped recruit some of them. There were three early victories from the initial counting of votes, but because of our complicated mail-in votes and delayed vote counting, one of the victors was strangely removed and replaced with another candidate. Our state voting system has already become complicated and opaque. Elected officials in an at-large system serve the whole community rather than a specific subset of it. This method is often used for city councils and school boards in smaller communities, but can also be employed in larger jurisdictions. District elections, on the other hand, are a system with, where a larger jurisdiction is divided into smaller geographical segments or districts. Each district elects its own representative who will serve the interests of that particular area. This form of election allows for more localized representation, giving voice to the unique concerns and needs of various parts of a larger community. This system is more common in larger cities and is often employed for state and federal legislative bodies. Fillmore, being a smaller city, is more appropriate for an at-large election where it serves the whole community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Paul Copely with Steve Sutton giving up his time.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for hanging in though through this whole process. I, I've had the opportunity to come speak to you guys a couple of times and I know that this is stressful. I've seen this happen in a lot of places. And to the people who are here too, I know this is stressful, I've watched this happen. But, um, before I start, I want to assure you guys all that it, it's going to be okay. This city is going to make it through this regardless of what happens. Um, a, a city's identity and its character is, is in its people, it's not in its, uh, its voting system or its elections. That said, I am very passionate about voting systems, so I'm here to talk to you about voting systems. But, um, the town is great, it's going to remain a great city even when this is done, depend, regardless of what you choose. So I wish you the best of luck in your choice. I know it's not an easy choice. I want to clarify a couple of things here based on the, the notes that were, uh, the meeting notes that were prepared, uh, by the city manager and by, uh, Ms. Park from National Demographics Corporation. Under the ranked choice voting section, I, I know that some of the information that you got came from, uh, National Demographics. And while I'm sure they did, uh, do some research, it is a bit like watching, uh, hiring a dingo to watch the baby. They certainly do not have, uh, ranked choice voting in, in mind as a solution. On here it says that only Albany uses RCV in an at-large election system. And that is of course true. The city of Albany is the only city in California using proportional ranked choice voting and they adopted it a few years back. But that should not, that should not dissuade you from seeking this as a potential settlement. At one point, there was only one airport in California and other people saw how great airports were and now lots of places use airports. Um, so that is something to consider. This is, this is a good system that can be used and just because only one city is currently using it should not dissuade other cities from using it if they choose. Also, right after that, it says, however, there is no legal framework to support the use of RCV. Um, you should have all received a copy of this, which is the court settlement for the city of Santa, uh, Santa Clarita, which is just right down the road here. In 2013, Santa Clarita, which is a general law city, was sued under the CVRA. And they settled in 2014 with the plaintiffs to go to cumulative voting, which is one of the alternative voting systems allowed for under the California Voting Rights Act. Uh, the, they had a settlement contingent upon a judge agreeing upon it. The judge did agree, it was signed, it is law, it is effective. Now, they didn't, they didn't decide to go through with it. Um, they didn't want to, they didn't want to cover the costs of cumulative voting and the work that they would have to do to their voting machines, so they decided to stick with plurality at large. And then about five years later, in 2020, they got a CVRA letter again because they never made the transition and now they're transitioning to districts. So they did not make the, the change, but they could have. They had the settlement on their side, it was legal, it was binding, it could have happened if they wanted to. Another thing on here, to our knowledge, no general law city has successfully implemented an alternative voting system. This is true, but again, that was by choice. Uh, Santa Clarita could have absolutely done that if they wanted to, they decided not to. Further down on these notes, it says that Palm Desert, which is another city that used proportional ranked choice voting, is now dropping PRCV and moving to a traditional by-district system. This is true, uh, however, they didn't actually use proportional ranked choice voting, they used a hybrid system where some of the city was in PRCV and some of it was using districts. That's sort of like some people wanting to take a car and some people wanting to take a motorcycle, so you cut them both in half and glue them together and it doesn't really work for anybody. Um, it's where it has been implemented, it has worked fantastically. And where it has not been implemented, it hasn't worked. So I think that that needs to be cleared up. And then lastly, on the notes, it says that, um, because it does not provide safe harbor, it doesn't, even though it would win in litigation, ranked choice voting, uh, does not dissuade people from filing suit in the future. However, in order to prove precedent, which is now a requirement under the CVRA, a plaintiff would have to allow at least a few cycles in order to gather data on the new system before they could effectively launch a challenge, uh, taking into account that they now have to prove that any other system would be an improvement, not just, uh, filing the lawsuit and then winning by default. The last things I want to say is that in the event that the city does decide to go to districts and then later wants to evaluate other options, in the last meeting, Councilmember Mendez said that if we decide to do this and we don't like it, we can always make that change. And the, the option of adopting a charter is still available and it doesn't necessarily have to be complicated if that's what the city wants to do. The city of Los Angeles's charter is literally hundreds of pages. I looked it up, it's mind-numbing, it just goes on and on and on, it covers everything. And on the other end of the spectrum, the city of Port Huinimi's charter is only seven pages. And most of it is basically saying, unless otherwise stated, default to California general law. And it can be very easily implemented and that would allow Fillmore to control its own elections if you decided not, you didn't want to stick with districts. Lastly, regarding costs, most places that choose to implement a system like this, because if you're the only city doing it, you have to cover the costs for the whole county, includes some kind of stipulation that it won't be implemented until such time as it only accounts for a certain percentage of a city's budget, which allows other cities to adopt the, the method as well. And there are many other cities in Ventura County currently considering this option. And that's my time.
Thank you.
So good luck to you all and thanks.
Next speaker is Gabriel Candelario. Next speaker is Gabriel Candelario.
You got it right this time.
Yeah, I practiced it.
Thank you. No, I was just saying, I've been hearing a lot of people talk, and an idea just popped up. I didn't know if this had been addressed yet. I was just wondering if with the moving, potential moving of five districts, if that would affect any of the voting sites that we currently have? I know that, like, for me, I'm a kind of creature of habit, so I'm always, like, since I've been old enough, I had always voted at St. Francis, and then I got moved, I think, to Sespe School. So I was just wondering if that would be like something to take into consideration, if having be five districts, if there would be a possibility for there to be, I guess, five different voting sites? If that would be an option, because that could make it where it's more accessible to people or even just more convenient? Or just having just one, I guess, known central location where everybody can go? I think there's just a lot of things to consider with that. I think it would be weird if I live in District Three or something and I have to cross all the way over to District One to go vote. But I think that's just something I would want to know an answer to or if you guys can consider. But thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up to council. Who wants to start? Where should we start?
Just to answer the last question, I know that at least it seemed, maybe the two election cycles ago, it went down to like one site.
One site.
And then last year, or last voting cycle was, I believe, also one site, and it changed locations.
Is that a county decision?
That is a county decision, and how they handle that is how they can make arrangements with the places that have the facilities, and we have no involvement in that unless they're asking to use the city facility.
Okay, so at least maybe we could request it and see where it goes from there.
That we have five?
Right. I know there used to be several, at least, but...
We did have several.
Yeah.
I mean, we could talk to them about that, but...
Right.
We can make the request, sure.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody want to come up? Let's just start basic. Let's choose a map first and then choose how we're going to do the voting cycle and then move on from there. Does that sound good?
Could we also just add a review of the ordinance? Because, I mean, it's all lumped into one, but essentially three topics.
It's already, I'm just going by what the agenda says. So yeah, we'll do that also.
Okay.
Okay? So anybody want to throw out a map? I'd like to throw out a map. I'd like to throw out the Coral map and...
By throwing out, Mayor, I'm sorry, I just meant eliminating.
I know, I'm just going to, we can throw out, we can...
Well, I just want to clarify what you meant by that. By throw out, you mean eliminating.
I meant I want to choose the Coral map or Map 102 and with the adjustments.
Okay, so choose. This is...
That's what I'm saying. If we can just choose two maps apiece and then we can...
Mayor, I'm in agreement with you. I was thinking about the Coral map and Map 102 myself.
Okay, so we have two for Coral and two for Map 102.
Okay. I'm for Map 102, Chris's map, Councilmember Girl's map, but I also like the one that's very similar to it, which is the teal map. So those are...
Carrie? We're just choosing maps, just to narrow it down. We got to start somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I can do either.
Either what?
The Coral or the 102.
Okay, I think we have a choice now already. We're going to choose Chris's map or the Coral map.
I think we all said 102 was something that we could consider.
Right.
Okay.
One thing that I did want to address, I actually did like Map 101 in many ways for the natural development that the city has had, but to maybe put an issue to rest, I can at least vouch, and Carrie, you could probably vouch, that you would fall under District Three on that map.
Right, I didn't like it because it took three of you guys out. I meant, that was what we had talked about in the beginning. We're not going to, I don't think we should do that.
Chris, can you ask your question again?
I just wanted to make sure that there, at least the way it's presented in the public map 101 that's published, that you do in fact live in District Three.
Right.
Based on that map. Yeah, I can verify that.
They both live in the same district.
Yeah, it's very, it's like one street difference there, but it's kind of maybe an older part of that development.
Christina lives on the other side over there, so they would be all in that district in 101. They'd be on the same district.
Right, but I know we had two speakers who said that they saw it differently, so...
Well, okay.
Before potentially moving forward with 102, would you be able to bring up the mapping tool to show us those adjustments so that everyone can see what that would look like?
Absolutely. There we go. All right, so in order to balance this map, what I looked at was to take this block here... Oh, is it going to let me select by block? There we go. So this block here that has 179 residents and move it into, so we're moving out of the orange into the purple, okay? So that just continues District Four along River Street to C Street. So this is one block right here. So that's the first change to balance the map. And then the second change to balance the map would be moving this block of 104 people right here. And again, I should probably zoom in on this for you. This block of 104, wait, I guess it's just going to... Okay, so this block of 104 between Fillmore and Central Ave, north of Sespe, from this green district, District Three, into the blue district, District Two. So those are two shifts in order to balance this map.
One of the other shifts that I had attempted, but it brought up another issue of contiguity, was essentially the southern portion of the red area. It's the old packing house. By clicking that and connecting Sespe all the way to kind of have a more clear dividing line, I don't believe there's any population there, it actually flagged it as not being contiguous, which to me, it actually seemed like it was more contiguous.
So there, are you talking about, there's a block right here with no population?
Correct, that one.
Yeah.
South of Sespe.
So that should, that wouldn't affect anything.
I guess it's now Landeras Way. Is that officially what it is? Yeah, sorry, it used to be Sespe.
And what's that bring the deviation down to?
My adjustments or...
Yeah, with your adjustments.
I believe it's under 8%. It's 7-point something.
We're okay.
Yeah, so you're okay. Any zero-population block is something that can be moved if you want. You wanted to move this out, this block here where it says, where we just have the railroad.
Correct, yeah, into the green.
Into the green, yes. That is, that's fine, yeah. And it may be just, it wouldn't have been contiguous because there's maybe some other blocks that are actually like the streets. So as long as you get all of them, yeah, having that continue on Sespe is totally fine.
Right.
I was just, sorry, I got to make a comment on that because you could, if you wanted to make it even cleaner for the whole triangle, I think you could move that block plus, I think the little buildings that are in part of that triangle on the left side, the most western side, I think that's the Fillmore labor camp. And so that doesn't have, it has a population, but it's not a voting population. So just saying, if you wanted to keep going from First Street and draw a line, see how First Street kind of ends, it sort of turns into a bike path, but if you wanted to draw a line right across to...
That's actually all a block that's connected all the way up to Second.
Right, that's where I was running into.
And I know you were looking at that exact same spot last time, and we're hoping there was, back to census blocks don't make sense.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, if you wanted to move the block at Sespe there, I'm going to write that down, that's completely fine. It doesn't move any population. Is there consensus on that, moving this from District One into District Three?
Yeah, it doesn't have any population.
Yeah, okay, great.
Is everybody good with those changes?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Are you? Okay. Chris, you okay with those changes? Okay. I guess we have a map then. So you'll make those changes for our next hearing, I meant our next meeting. Okay. Now we're going to move on to, I think this choice should be Carrie's choice, where we should start with this, Carrie.
Sure.
I meant, it affects you, but you're...
Mayor, I was going to say the same thing for the sequencing, to leave it between Carrie and Chris.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I would definitely desire to fulfill my four-year terms. I was supported in both by people working with me to be elected, providing financial support during the campaign, and I think it's my responsibility and duty to, you know, see the four-year term all the way through.
I completely agree.
My preference.
Yeah, and one thing that I've considered is the exact same thing, like my term is to the end of 2024. As we've already discussed, there is no map that could be drawn where we wouldn't be running against each other, and you having to run again earlier than was required and entrusted to you originally by the voters. And at first, I kind of had some qualms with that. It feels, you know, you feel somewhat slighted, but I was blessed over my time when I was away at training to hear for the first time, I don't know how I haven't heard this, or maybe you don't remember it, but it's a poem called "The Indispensable Man," and I'll read it just for a moment if you'll let me. Says sometime when you're feeling important, sometime when your ego is in bloom, sometime when you take it for granted, you're the best qualified in the room. Sometime when you feel that you're going would leave an unfulible hole, just follow these simple instructions and see how they humble your soul. Take a bucket and fill it with water, put your hand in it up to the wrist, pull it out and the hole that's remaining is the measure of how you'll be missed. You can splash all you wish when you enter, you may stir up the water galore, but stop and you'll find that in no time it looks quite the same as before. The moral of this quaint example is to do just the best that you can. Be proud of yourself, but remember, there's no indispensable man. And I think it fits perfectly with the situation we're in.
No truer words.
Yeah.
I would like a copy of that.
Yeah, "The Indispensable Man." I was trying to figure out, it's been used many times, but it looks like it's most attributed to Saxon White Cussinger.
Maybe you can have a frame for all of us.
I'm going to carry it around.
Well said.
Okay, so we've decided on item number two, so let's go to item number three.
And just to confirm, that's the 2026 cycle for the district.
Yeah.
Chris, Councilmember Girl, I want to thank you for your work on this map.
Yeah, absolutely. I did owe that as well. Thank you, Chris, for bringing this forward.
Okay, now, can the city attorney give us a rundown on the ordinance or...
The ordinance is just the legislation that, when adopted, would establish that the city is switching from voting at-large to voting districts, and it will adopt this specific map, which will then be in place until the city council adopts a new map after we receive the results of the 2030 census. And our demographer reviews it and advises us what, where we need to change boundaries because they're lopsided. So it's a pretty straightforward piece of legislation to make the change from at-large to voting districts.
One of our astute members that spoke today this evening asked about the, completely blank.
Appointments?
The, yeah, if a district does not have someone volunteer to run or step forward, how do we handle that?
Then it's just like any vacancy on the council. If someone moved out of the city or passed away, as has happened periodically, the city council appoints someone to fill that vacancy, and the city council can decide how that process is run.
And that's only somebody from that district?
Yes, it has to be someone from that.
From that district, and it would be a four-year term?
Yes.
Wow. Yeah, and again, you know, I recognize that that's so opposite of what we expect from our electorate, you know, and our whole voting process, where it's, we can't get around, I'm just venting now, like I have been.
Yeah.
But the, it's disheartening to me to know that there's going to be situations that possibly could come up where we have people on council who have not been elected by the constituents. And it is what it is. And while I'm on a roll here, can I throw in a few more of my comments here? Somebody else mentioned earlier this evening, one of our speakers, that there's going to be restrictions on who you can talk to, who your representative is. And I'm not looking at it that way. I'm still representing everybody in Fillmore. I mean, I'm relying on, you know, the district that I'm in to actually provide, you know, the support or the votes and whatnot. But as far as anything else goes, and you all know this, the city is so small anyway that what affects, you know, someone in District Three is going to have an impact on someone in District Five. And I think I can speak pretty well for most of our, I think all of our council members, that we all think that way. And this is not going to change that, so, you know, I'm encouraging any of you who think that you can now only reach out to your elected or your district representative, it's not the case. You know, I will welcome calls from anybody in any district, and I would hope that the council members would feel the same way, that they wouldn't, you know, there wouldn't be any kind of an issue if they do that. And I think that's the way, I'm going to, I didn't like this, and I know most of you know that from day one, I've been rapping, raving, and kicking my feet about this, but it is what it is, and I think we can move forward. I think Paul said it eloquently, that it's not going to change our town. So, except for, you know, fortunately for people that are campaigning, you only have to walk a few blocks instead of the entire city. So, you know, that's a bonus, a plus to it. So anyway, I just wanted to share that, share my thoughts, that this isn't going to change from my perspective, it's not going to change my representation. So I just wanted to share that.
Chris? Okay. I'll add in another comment, too, as well. Thank you, Carrie, for your words, and I 100% agree with you and 100% on board that, you know, to get anything done here at city council and in the city takes a minimum of three votes. And if you've been watching us, I know all of you here, we are pretty much on board with many of our votes being unanimous votes for moving forward things in the city. We differ on a few things, but for the most part of running the city, you'll see us all, you know, we'll give our input and we'll get to agreement. So agree with Carrie, absolutely 100% that we're here, we're not just representing our district, whatever that may, whatever it may be. And I just wanted to say one more thing, too, about, I think it was brought up before, and maybe it was Ms. Brock, about the not being able to vote for the candidate that you want because they're not in your district. And that is true, it's understandable of not being able to have that vote, but I want to ask you all here today and those who are watching and, you know, everyone who might see this, is that this is really a challenge to kind of to go even more into our citizenry and our civic process, and that is, you may not be able to give the person that you want who's a district, you know, next door to you or across the city from you, but bring them 20 votes by going and helping them canvas, by saying, hey, if you have a neighbor or yourself, if you're going to host a... by, um, saying, hey, if you have a neighbor or yourself, if you're gonna host a, um, a get-to-know-you for the candidates, I'll, I'll, I'll recruit people, I'll tell them to come. So it, it's sort of a challenge, I think, for all of us, and I know there's a couple of districts where we haven't had representatives, and, um, I would just, just want to welcome everyone to, to reach out to people, to start, you know, talking to folks who you know have that leadership potential, um, to, to say, consider running for city council, you know? So I just want to, just want to add that in, just, and just say that it's, uh, it's, it's different. Um, it may seem a little daunting and it may seem a little, um, you know, we want to avoid appointing at all costs, and so if we, if we take to heart that, um, let's, let's get, you know, let's, let's work on candidates, let's talk to our neighbors, let's talk to people that we're affiliated with, with different clubs and churches and, um, school, you know, maybe fellow parents, something like that, um, we, we can, we can work together and, and do that. Just want to add that in.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just sitting up here thinking about how we, how, how our elections were run before and now how they're going to be run, and it's kind of heartbreaking to me. I mean, the whole, the whole process has been heartbreaking to me. It's been very eye-opening, but it's been, it, it, it pulls something away from my heart. I meant, that's, that's about all I have to say. I mean, I, I've been pretty much on, on board with what Carrie's been saying all along. I, I, I don't like this at all.
I do have, uh, a comment about the, the ordinance or maybe just a question. I, I do believe that some of the council members would like to revisit the idea of , uh, ranked choice voting, probably under a charter?
Yeah.
Uh, in the future? Would that be required to be part of this ordinance?
No, we, we just, we just, we just do that as a part of a regular agenda. We agendize it and go, start moving forward with the charter.
May I request that we add that to a future agenda?
We can't do it on this agenda. We have to wait till...
No, I know, just request it at a future meeting, like, a staff would take away from this, as part of this discussion, that it be added to a future agenda?
What exactly about?
A, a charter. To be considered.
We have to, we have to bring that up as a regular agenda item on a regular agenda. We can't do it on our special meeting agenda because there's nowhere to do that. I'm trying to say...
On the 12th?
On, on December 12th, we can bring that up, we can bring that back and, and bring it up to be agendized.
Okay, and that would be a, a second reading of the ordinance?
That would be under, I think, council member recommendations?
Correct.
Okay.
And then I want to add just one more thing, and that's, um, as I mentioned, I have talked to so many of the constituents throughout Fillmore over this, this entire process, and I'm just astounded at the amount of hours and time that people put into looking into this and the phone calls that I've received, um, and I know that people worked very, very hard on this, and I just wanted to recognize our community for, um, you know, the labor that you put into this, even though it's not how we wanted things to conclude, um, or the way it looks like they're going to conclude. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to thank those, um, who have, you know, worked so diligently on this and it, it was hard.
And many of you are, and many of you are in this room.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, you know, without that kind of support and that kind of encouragement, um, it, it's hard to do this, so, but thank you.
One other thing, um, and it was going to your first question, Carrie, about the, um, appointments. Because I filled the seat, the election that was previously filled by an appointment, um, which was specifically appointed up until the next election, not till the end of the election cycle. Would that potentially be a factor? If somebody was appointed to a vacant district, that it would just be until the next election cycle? And/or one of the options I do remember back then was having a special election, which the city did not do back then because of cost. Would those same rules or timelines still apply?
So no, the law here is different, um, and just has an appointment for the four years.
Okay, so it's not until the next election because that district is tied to that election cycle specifically? Okay.
Okay.
I want to ditto what, uh, Councilmember Brogie said, and I want to, just want to thank you all for coming out here and those of you, a lot of you have been here to every meeting and I really took what you said to heart and I thank you and I'm not just gonna, like, uh, Councilmember Brogie said, um, I may have my district, but I'm still gonna represent all of Fillmore. You all could feel free to contact me and I will get, um, feel free to talk to you and, and work with you. And so I'm here for everybody.
Okay, need a motion, Mayor? Okay, um, I'll move that the city council, um, let's see here, that we have identified the district map 102 with the, I'm not sure, the sequence of Councilmember Brogie carrying out her 20, her term through 2026 and, um, oh, do I need the ordinance? Do I have to read the ordinance title? Ah, sorry, not sure that I have that.
Be clear while you look for that, um, it's the ordinance with the three changes that were discussed about moving blocks. Sorry.
Correct.
I think I have it.
Yeah.
I don't have it, I'm sorry.
Just say what the movie, the, the edits made by NTC or?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine for that, but she's looking for the title. I'll give you the title, I just want to read the title.
Sorry, one last question about the ordinance. It, it was related to a question I brought up about, um, it being revisited. I know there's a section in there that says, um, that this would be in place until, um, essentially the law changes, but I don't know that it says it shall be reviewed at that point, so it, like, it would must come back to the council? Was that determined to not be legally viable?
No, but there wasn't consensus on that. You were the only one who mentioned it last time, so that's why I didn't change that. If there is consensus on that, you guys can change that right now and we can update that.
What was that?
Let me bring it up real quick and, uh, read it a little more closely.
Okay. I mean, you don't have to give them the specific recital, you can just tell them the concept. There's, there's something in, in the ordinance about changing if, changing, considering changing the map if the law allows it, and he had brought up at the last public hearing to have it say, consider having it say it shall be changed if the law, it shall be considered if the law revised, is revised, but there wasn't anyone else who said that they were supportive of that at the time, so we didn't put the shall in the ordinance. If you want to change that, that can be done right now.
Yeah, so it would essentially be, uh, section, I, I think, under section 115, 020. It currently says, item A, the district specified above shall continue in effect until they are amended or replaced in accordance with the law, and that's kind of that process. And my recommendation was that it shall be revisited if the law changes.
I would be good with that.
I'd be good with that too.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, well, um, Councilmember Viasenior, will you, do you amend your motion to include a revision to, um, 11520A to add that sentence that it shall be revisited?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll, I'll repeat the motion again, that city council move to, um, to adopt the district map 102, um, that the sequencing will have Councilmember Brogie through her term 2026, and the reading of the ordinance with the aforementioned...
Edits.
...per Councilmember Gorola. As an ordinance of the city council, the city of Fillmore, adding chapter 1.15 to the Fillmore Municipal Code, is establishing a district-based election system and adopting of an exemption from SEQA.
Did, did you hit sequencing?
And, um, I said, uh, Councilmember Gorola, I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brogie, sequencing through her 2026...
Okay, thank you.
...years on council.
Just to clarify, we're saying District Four then will be assigned to 2026, is that correct?
Yes, I believe so. Okay, the motion, made the motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Will you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gorola?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Viasenior?
Yes.
Mayor Austin?
No.
Councilmember Brogie?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number seven, city manager.
I have nothing to say, thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn to our regularly scheduled meeting at eight, uh, 6:30 on Tuesday, December 12th. Meeting adjourned.